You're gonna bang a gavel or someone or?
Oh, wait, okay, I'm sorry, he was looking at you, so I was like, oh.
Make my fist.
Okay, so you're live.
Brad's in charge, yes.
Oh, no, how do we do this without Brad?
Some things never change, right?
Well, you know, I only teach people I like, so.
You know, I know. You stop teasing me, I know I'm in trouble.
Left and right, we'll do it, okay.
We live?
Yeah.
All right, welcome everybody to Sherwood City Council Work Session, November fourth, it is five thirty-one P M, we got three. Two city council work session items on the agenda, a presentation from Clean Water Services. And Sherwood's own Joe Gahl is here. A little bit about that. And we have, um, and we have someone else here, and I apologize, I don't know your name.
I'll, I'll introduce.
Okay, we'll get to that, okay, and then we have an update on our Old Town Strategic Action Plan. Then we'll adjourn the work session, and we'll also have as an Urban renewal Agency Board Work Session. Um, on our Art Center Bacon Lot Development Discussion, so with that. I'm gonna kick it over to Craig, did you want to introduce Joe?
I think you're, I think we go right to Joe.
Joe, you're up.
Thank you. Sure, everybody knows Joe, so.
Ever around for a few years.
Um, thank you, Mayor and Council, um, just for the record, uh, Joe Gahl, I'm the Chief Utility Relations Officer for Clean Water Services. Says, and I'm joined with me tonight is Rick Shanley, which we're gonna get to, our interim CEO and General Manager. But I also wanna acknowledge Sammy McGana, who is part of the Communications and Community Engagement Team, which is one of my teams. She focuses on Sherwood, to do the projects and engagement activities, so she's here, uh, as well. We are kinda getting back out to all the cities, we used to do this, I think, uh, before COVID, once a year, come to cities and just kinda give an update. And have some FaceTime with their, uh, partner cities, so we're starting that process again. You're the third city, we were in Cornelius last night, Forest Grove last week, so. And with that, I wanna provide an opportunity for Rick to introduce himself, because he doesn't get to go out to cities very much in his previous roles, so. So I'm dragging him out to meet everybody, so Rick, do you wanna just introduce yourself?
Happy to be here, um, so I'm Rick Shanley, I was promoted from acting to interim CEO, um, whatever that means. I've been in this role for, uh, I guess five months, starting in June. And prior to that, I've been with Clean Water for probably eleven years, um, twelve years, just flipping, flipping over that. Be- before I was the Chief Engineer and Water Technology Officer, so I basically had all of the engineering group, the planning group, um, our innovation group, and then the operations staff, field ops, pretty good. Pretty good part of the organization, so I think I've, um, been able to continue moving, moving things along within, within Clean Water Services, have a good handle on this. Capital program development, all those pieces, but what, what's been a different role for me, um, is, is being out more, um, going to the county leadership meetings, um, and the. The board has been, um, very driven to try to get Clean Water Services more in touch with, with the member cities, so. It's a great help to have Joe here, um, and, uh, going out and doing these tours has been a lot of fun, so really, I just wanted to, I haven't, I know y'all know Joe, you don't know me, just kinda meet everyone in person, um. Happy to answer questions, and then hopefully, you know, this is the continuation of what we feel like is a really good partnership with, with the city of Sherwood. If you have any questions, but I won't, I don't need to go through my whole background.
You're gonna need a tagline, like, just call Gahl.
Yeah. Wow, uh-oh, yeah. I'll think of a G-rated one.
Excellent. Um, so I'm not gonna go through everything on these slides, but just a refresher for folks, uh, if you haven't gone through C W S Essentials. I encourage you to when we operate again, um, so. Clean Water Services, as you know, we provide wastewater and stormwater services, uh, for the county, for many areas, we have about six hundred thousand plus residents that we serve. Well, partner cities, Sherwood is one of them, and then all the urban unincorporated area for Washington County, we provide services for. You can see our budget, uh, current budget up there in terms of, uh, point of comparison. If one of the unique aspects, there's a lot of things I've learned since leaving Sherwood and going to Clean Water Services that I didn't know until I actually got into the organization. I didn't realize we held the nation's first integrative watershed-based permit, that's very unique, and I can touch on that, uh, briefly in my, uh, discussion here tonight. We work closely with Washington County, but we're a separate organization from them, we're a separate O R S four fifty-one, we're our own private, not private utility, we're on utility, public utility. People get confused, as you probably can guess, because we share governing bodies, so the County Board of Commissioners is also our Board of Directors, under that O R S four fifty-one, uh, legislation. We have a Clean Water Services Advisory Commission that meets monthly, uh, that has various stakeholders that we affect, so there are two reps from the ag. Sector, there's two reps from the environmental sector, there's two reps from the business community, two reps from the developer builder, uh, community, so Mark Faroff. Is one of our C WAC members for, that represents the developer community, and then representatives from each of the board districts. And that is an important committee, they're not a committee that, uh, makes decisions, but they're an advisory commission.
Well, can I ask you a question about that, Joe?
Of course.
So, the vast majority of the people you serve are in cities, so.
Correct.
Are there city leaders on that advisory board?
Great question, Mayor, um, right now, there is a city rep, Sherilyn Lambos has been the rep for, uh, cities on that board, what's unique is it's a non-voting member. Is not a voting member of the board at this point, um, that's kind of been the tradition, we were in Cornelius last night, and Mayor Delane. Um, provided a lot of good feedback, and he, uh, so that need, this needs to kinda change, cuz the services that you provide really are in cities. And no offense to the county board, but.
That's okay.
You know, um, cities should be more represented as a governing body, that, that's his vision, I, I know others share that vision, I think that's a question that. Probably will be discussed and analyzed in the future.
Yeah, I think that's an important thing, that needs, and I've talked to several accounting commissioners about it, cuz there's a, there's kind of a gap there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a challenge.
Yeah. And, you know, I mentioned that to folks, and they're like, oh, I never really thought about that, and they're like, from a city perspective, that totally makes sense, so. You can read these slides, I pulled some of this out of our budget, uh, we have four, we don't call them treatment facilities, I, I call them treatment facilities, but they're water resource recovery facilities. The facility that serves Sherwood is Durham, uh, which is not in Durham, it's actually in Tyler. Uh, I think because it's on Durham Road, that's why they call it the Durham Water Resource Recovery Facility. Just like you, I think this, you know, some of those inflationary costs certainly affect us.
Sorry for missing the beginning, can I start again?
Miss you guys. This is another thing, I think that's important, you know, part of this is, is an educational opportunity for, for folks. We provide regional-only services to the seven biggest cities, so including Sherwood, so the services that we provide are regional in nature, and I'm gonna get into a definition of that. In a, in a couple minutes, um, the smaller cities, the banks, Durham, Gaston's, and you can see the list up there, we provide regional services, but we also provide the local services. So the local services which are provided, well, now, no longer by, by, longer than public director, but by Rich, primarily in the town of Works crews. We provide those services in the smaller cities, cuz those cities don't have the resources to do that. And then large industrial customers, um, we work with directly, the Intels of the world, anyone that is sending unique. Things in the wastewater stream, chemicals and other kind of stuff, have an additional permit from us that we. The one company in Sherwood that historically, I think it was Columbia Cascade, is the name, but I don't know if they're there anymore. Are they still there? Okay, so they have, that's the one customer in Sherwood that gets a, a direct bill from us. I mentioned regional services, uh, here's the list of what that is, this is primarily, uh, the big pipes.
Great, remind me about the direct bill from Columbia, whatever, so we need, are we getting our. Franchise fees on those bills?
Awesome. Stirred up a little bit. Uh, so the regional services, besides all the treatment facilities, uh, the major twenty-four-inch pipes and larger pipelines. We do all the work related to the permit, which I would touch on, you really don't wanna do that, it's a treatment, some of the work that goes with the permit, another lesson, uh, getting into the organization. However, I'm gonna leave this document, and you'll see a bunch of statistics in here in terms of what the city of Sherwood does. You, your work that you do at the local level goes into that permit and that reporting, so you do have a role in terms of. Providing information to be confused with satisfying. This is a list of the local services, uh, basically the smaller pipes, uh, that you take care of, and, uh, street sweeping and. The local water quality facilities, clean catch basins, things like that, that's what, uh, our partners in Public Works here does. So, I thought when I worked here, I understood what C W S did, um, I've learned a lot in the four and a half years, I did not realize how important the permit was. Uh, so I always hit on this, uh, Greg knows, cuz he's been doing this for many years, but everything we do, really from a business standpoint, is. Really driven by that permit, and it's a five-year permit, it's one permit for the whole watershed, instead of individual permits to each of the treatment facilities. And the M S four, which is a stormwater permit, in most other permits, those are separate, so we combined it all together into one permit. Which gives us a lot of, uh, flexibility to do things differently at the different treatment facilities, and those are all the things that basically we're allowed to do in that M P D E S permit, which is a federal permit.
Help me understand, it's a permit that you issue to other people, or one?
No, it's a permit, we apply to the state.
Okay.
Or issue, and it really does drive our business. This is where we are, we're in the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-seven permit right now, you can see with the red where, where we are. We're getting close to beginning to plan for a new permit that is due in June of twenty twenty-seven. Um, but we're also looking out not only for that next five-year cycle, but the cycle after that. K F A S, which is something you probably read about, that's something we're worried about, so we're planning out, because at some point, that's gonna be potentially in our permit. So we're very concerned about regulations and things that could come to affect us in a permit, and this engineer can answer any specific questions, but. Yeah, exactly. But that permit is really, really, uh, critical to our.
Producers. They, they stopped making, I know, so it's, right?
Yeah. Yeah, it's gonna be expensive to somebody, so. This report is a fiscal year twenty-five per, report, so for every city, I'm just kinda touching on expenses for last year and what we spent. The Rock Creek Phase Two is just starting, so we started to spend a little bit of money last year, Brookman, we finally got started, thank goodness, um.
Lots of people questioned, what's going on in that construction, I saw you answer a couple times.
We are doing some preliminary work for the pump station and the force main, uh, uh, property that we're talking to you initially, we're still looking at that, some other alternatives. And then, the last, uh, item up there are the Durham Treatment Facility upgrades, so. That's not in Sherwood, but those benefit Sherwood and the other cities that are Durham, just to give you a sense of.
So, and, and, is, is any of that about expanding capacity in Durham?
Yes, yes. Is that? Great segue, go ahead.
In terms of, well, you were at Sherwood, you know how well we managed our water funds, so we had programmed in capital expansions, uh, based on our current rate structure, so we didn't have to go out and ask for money. Are you doing the same thing at Clean Water Services?
Yes.
For those projects?
Yes, so let me.
Okay.
That's a great segue.
Okay.
So today, at the, uh. C W S Board of Directors Meeting, the West Basin Master Plan, which has been a two-year effort, was adopted. And the right, the West Basin is all the areas in the green, so all of those, uh, communities, the wastewater go to those three treatment facilities that are added. Identify the Forest Grove, Hillsborough, or Rock Creek facilities, um, and that two-year effort is really looking out over twenty years and working with the cities. To determine what are your growth, what, how do you wanna grow? Do you wanna grow residential, do you wanna grow commercial, industrial, where's that growth gonna take place, what do we have to have in terms of infrastructure to serve that, when is it coming? It's that twenty-year, basically master plan, just like you do for your various infrastructure. You're in the East Basin, we did the twenty twenty-two update to the East Basin Master Plan, um, we just updated that. This year, again, with the West Basin being done, that is the basis now, we have a twenty-year plan, the numbers for the West Basin, cuz they came out today, about one point four billion dollars. Of capital projects in the West Basin over the next twenty years. Um, I'm sorry, I don't have the number for the East Basin, uh, I can get you that number, but they're big numbers, the, the work that goes into our capital, uh. Either at the plants or the, the pipes is very, very expensive. I anticipated you and I had mentioned a few months ago about S T Cs, we haven't looked at our S D C methodology, and I was just talking to our Chief Financial Officer today, I'm like, when are we doing that? Cuz I could get that question tonight, and she said, now that the basin plans are done, and we know what we're gonna need to build over the next twenty years, that's next. We need to look at our S D C methodology in the next year or two, um, and we will not do that in isolation, we'll do that in conjunction with the cities.
I would, just since we're on that topic, one of the things I wanted to make a suggestion on is I really think you need. A rates setting slash S D C Permanent Committee made up of representatives from the cities, we're the ones that take the heat.
Mm-hmm.
You know, when we have, um, a bad actor landlord and, um, signs a lease with the new lesser, and then they find out they have thirty thousand dollars in Clean Water Services fees to do what they wanna do, but we've taken steps on. Notice and transparency to help with that problem, but still, it's, it's a, it's a barrier to economic development, so I think it's really important that cities are involved in those conversations.
And I will certainly pass that on, but when you have a chance, I know Commissioner Snyder wanted to be here tonight, but talk to you, Commissioner, let them know, cuz I think creating something like that. Can improve the situation as we dive into that, it's been a long time since we've looked at S T Cs, and we need to.
And what's a long time make me?
Do you happen to know how long it's been since we looked at S D C methodology?
It might be two thousand nine, I'm lost, but. The methodology of.
Yeah, it's time, long overdue. Out of that, those basins plan, that East Basin plan, this is out of our C I P, this is what we're planning over the next five years, most of these projects are in Sherwood. Um, except the last one, which is the Durham Plan, so it's about a little over a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars of investment planned in the next five years. Either in Sherwood specifically, or to serve Sherwood and the fellow communities at Durham, just to give you a sense of scale.
A lot, yes, a hundred million, not a hundred.
I knew what you meant.
But, would I say a hundred thousand?
Yeah, and I, I know we've had some community, let's say, response to the Brooklyn, uh, price tag, um, I have not. Heard yet the price tag for the Sherwood residents on these other things, what can we e- expect, I mean, we, we talked about who's bearing the, the.
Well, that's, these are our, these are C W S costs.
That's why I asked the previous question.
Right, no, I know, but even though they're your costs, Brookman Expansion. Put some, there, there was, there was some friction there, right, where there was, you know, there was a large amount of money that was gonna have to be paid by the people who. Are on that land if they, if their septic ever fails, so I'm just, I, again, I, I, I love that we're coming to the table and trying to address that, I'm just, are we, are we doing?
They redid that, you guys.
We redid that, yeah, so we changed the way, the methodology, we were not gonna do a reimbursement district.
Right.
At all, so unless you.
Thinking for this as well?
You know, none of these will be, these are basically out of our capital.
Okay.
Budget.
Great, that's what I wanted, I guess that's an easy.
So as, large properties in the Brookman area develop, they will pay S T Cs.
Okay.
To pay back the money that we're basically fronting, I mean, you are contributing a portion, um.
Okay.
Congrats on getting the money from the state, Brookman, that helps.
So that's the five million, roughly five million, uh, one point nine due at the end of the project, and then it stretched over, we have a loan with them over twenty years for the S D.
But these other projects, property owners, we're not gonna have to pay for, these will be C W S.
Users, so part of your, part of your monthly bill is going to pay this.
Yes. It's like our water bill, and, and by the way, I just, since we're talking about that assessment district that didn't happen.
Yeah.
Um, I do appreciate you guys taking that seriously and figuring out how to make that work, cuz that original plan of. Just hitting the owners right there, or something that was gonna service all of that basin, was kinda cray cray, so.
Yeah, it, it was the wrong tool, yeah, went honestly, so. It took a while to get through that and to work, to find a solution, but we got there, so.
So, you know, we went out and got a Christmas tree bill item out of Salem, um, to pay for most of the city's portions of that Brooklyn project. And the way we sold that is, it's a housing enabler, right, cuz a lot of, uh, a lot of that land down there was infrastructure constrained mainly because of sewer. Is, does Clean Water Services actively go talk to Salem about those issues, cuz.
Yes.
Cuz, uh, the infrastructure challenges we have, a lot of it sewer, right, and it's not just our city, so, and are you guys actively trying to get those same brands?
So, so Tracy Rainey, who used to be at the League of Oregon Cities, um, in the lobby team, came to C W S about six months after I got C W S, and. For the first time, we have a lobbyist and someone that can focus on Salem and D C, she knows Salem, and she's down there actively working on those kind of bills.
Yeah, cuz.
And getting engaged.
Five million dollar grant, that's, that's maybe a couple of years of no rate, rate increases, right?
Another project that's just starting, uh, that I wanted to make sure the city, uh, knew about, we've gotten a lot of questions about billing. So we have a system that's been around for decades, you do the billing on our behalf.
For now.
For now.
And maybe forever.
And maybe forever, I mean. And we have not since two thousand eight really taken a look at how we bill our customers and whether the way we do it now is the best way. So, we will be starting a study over the next sixty-eight months, again, working with our stakeholders like the city of Sherwood. Really evaluate what, what are the different options, one option is to continue the way we're doing it, but probably there's a way of improving that, so what is that? Another option is C W S bills all the customers on.
I don't want that to bill.
That's one of the things that I've already heard from people, um, but we really need, need to take a look, because it's a very fragmented, confusing. System, when you look at, depending on where you are in the district, your bill comes from different folks, and a lot of folks don't know who that Clean Water Services is, cuz they get their bill from the city. And there's a line item on there, but they don't know what that.
I know, we take the brunt of.
Yes.
All of the increases are them, I guess, raised by them.
I mean, you could argue, most people don't care.
That's true.
But the other side of it, yeah, there's the same problem we have with Metro and Garder trades, I mean, cuz they set rates, and then we feel the brunt of it, I think there's a certain amount of accountability. When they see the, where the bills actually coming from, uh, that's missing, that, that's a problem I'd like to solve.
So this is the timeline, we just got the green light from the board a couple weeks ago, uh, we'll be selecting a consultant to help us do this, uh, a, a year from now, if not earlier, we will have the results of that. And then we've got some decisions to make, we're not gonna make those alone, we're gonna make them with our partners, so that's the intent.
So, I'm just curious, cuz, uh, cuz I was in that industry that did utility buildings for years with counties and cities and districts, just like C W S. There is off-the-shelf configurable software that you can buy, I'm just curious why the need for such an expensive, assuming, um, study on this.
Um, I don't think it'll be that expensive. I don't know, we haven't hired a consultant, I've heard from our finance team, fifty thousand bucks probably to do this work, part of the reason we wanna bring in consultant is, our finance team. Is also doing the budget and everything else, and in terms of their workload, they can't do a good job, and I think there's an advantage of bringing an outside perspective.
Same reason why we do on, on, often.
To do this, um.
And, and the timeline is primarily also needs to be public process.
Needs to be a public process.
Station with all your partners.
And.
And the community.
We have to do it right, that's, uh, uh, and not necessarily rush to a conclusion, um. If we decided to do our own billing for everybody, converting, getting the information, I don't even know what software you use, what support. And, you know, every city's different, getting that info, you know, getting that information from one to the other could be challenging.
Thousands and thousands of times over and over again.
Yeah. But that's if that alternative is selected as the best.
Assuming, yeah, I'm, I'm just saying, those are, those are easy things to solve.
And if, of the seven. Major cities, um, if three wanna go one path, and four wanna go a different path, what does that mean?
That's another great question that I've pondered as a potential, cuz I see that potential happening from talking, I tend to talk more with the city managers and the finance directors rather than the electives, but. I hear different perspectives, do the study, let's look at the alternatives, but you're commenting on like, I don't want two bills, or, you know, two bills, then there's confusion, I. I get a bill from the city of Sherwood that has stormwater and sanitary on it, and I get a second bill from Clean Water Services for the same subjects, am I getting double billed? What, what, there's.
Have to call when I move?
Yeah.
Let's call them both, like.
Like, when I moved here from California, I got my first P G E bill, I thought it was Pacific Gas and Electric, until Northwest Natural showed up to turn my gas off, I'm like, yeah, I have another bill just for gas.
Well, the counter would be if you're a Twelve Valley Water customer in a city that's Clean Water Services, they give multiple bills, they're, it's all interrelated.
Yeah, there's pros and cons, I don't think there's a clear, like, this is the, the best choice, I think. But it's, it's long overdue. And then a couple other things that are tied to the permit that a year from now are required, and will be, one of these will be working very closely with you, so. Uh, the first bullet is, we are required with some specific sections within our Design and Construction Standards, very narrow scope. Uh, stormwater sections to revise that based on the D E Q permit, we do not wanna open the whole Design and Construction Standard book up, because we would never meet that deadline. So we're trying to be very narrow in terms of those specific sections, um, and then another requirement, uh. By next November is all of our operating I G As have to be updated, so we have been working diligently and slowly with various cities, Hillsborough, Beaverton, and Cornelius are done. We are currently working with Washington County and Tewallaton, and we're hoping to be done with them by January. And we're just starting with Tyler, so Sherwood, I'm hoping spring, summer, next year, to work with your staff ultimately on a new operating I G A. In what that I, two thousand eight, is when it was updated, a lot of two thousand eight, two thousand nine stuff I've discovered, um.
I think that's about, we went through this, all the whole financials.
Yeah.
Before.
Yeah.
Hard to believe this, but in the years.
That's basically.
Fun, you know, time flies.
How we work together, uh, in terms of managing the work that we do. And it may be easier by the time we get to Sherwood, because we've got all these other ones, we want a lot of similarity, if, if at all possible, with the other cities, you know, I have fifteen different I G As.
Try to do this in Forest Grove at the same time.
Yeah, yeah, so just as a head.
Proximity makes it easier.
Yes. Saving the best for last, right?
There you go.
Um, but I wanted to.
Forest Grove is a fine city.
Yep. Yes, it is, I wanted you to be aware of those as well, and that's really it. And that's really it. Open for any other questions, comments, other things, um, you'd like to chat about?
Yeah, I had a question, the wetland that is off of Tom Queen Road, I don't. I don't remember. Rock Creek, does CWS men or control clean that?
It's really.
It's a refuge.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't do anything with weapons.
Right.
Um, we, we work along a lot of streams, repairing areas that have wetlands. It'd be some of that work, that restoration work, but we don't get involved with wetlands in terms of management and things like that. We work very closely with the refuge on our variety of projects, they're a big partner with us.
Lots of plantings.
Lots of plantings.
You know, just going back to the SDCs real quick, I think I'm glad to hear you're gonna look at that and hopefully we can have some robust dialogue with the cities, cause. There's just parts of it that don't make sense, you know, the, the, the costs of just adding one bathroom, for instance, to a commercial business and stuff like that. Um, and it's, we hear it all the time from people looking for space, uh, small businesses and stuff, and uh. There's gotta be a more equitable way of distributing those costs. Are we good?
All good.
Thank you, I love eating.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Follow you at your car.
I know.
Awesome, all right, well, thank you so much for coming, nice meeting you.
See you, Joe.
Good friend, Joe.
Thanks for the report, Joe.
Oh, thank you, Renee, I didn't realize you were online.
Renee, did you have a question, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to thank him, it's great to hear all the collaboration and partnership conversations.
My microphone isn't working, you sound muffled.
Short drive home.
Okay.
It sound like a bee.
No, it's not working.
So few times I've done it, yeah.
Well, I'm.
Scoot down.
Eric's in front now, someone look into it. Eric, you're welcome, let's hear it, why don't you do it?
Thank you for your bike, Kristen, thank you. Ready? All right, we'll go on to our next agenda item is the Old Town Strategic Plan. Okay, and I have on Bureau of Eric Kader.
Actually, it was a misprint, but that's okay, we'll.
I'll, I'll kick us off. A different, a different Eric, thank you, Mayor, uh, so we're here. This is the, uh, fourth council work session we've done on the Old Town Strategic Plan, so we're getting to the end of the project, uh, we've done two open houses. Uh, we've done a planning commission check in, a few citizens advisory committee meetings, tactical advisory committee meeting, so we're nearing the end. Um, we're basically looking tonight for feedback on, you know, big picture, where the, where the plan has landed. And then also the specific actions, since this is an action plan, um, you know, we kinda have three broad categories, specific actions under all of those categories. Do you like them, do you not, should we tweak them? Um, and if you have, if you really like, uh, some over the others, we'd love to get that feedback as well, we can, you know, that'll give us the. Uh, information to kind of, uh, fast track or prioritize those as we move towards implementation, so. Next steps here, if everything looks good, we'll bring this, uh, to Planning Commission for a public hearing, then to City Council for a hearing, and we'll adopt it via resolution. Uh, at council, so Jason Graff and, uh, Will Grimm with first forty feet, have them lead the presentation, go ahead.
Thanks, um, thanks for having us, it's always great to be here, and this is one, Ben. A really interesting project, and this is the kind of place where we wanna be in front of decision makers. Taking a hard look at your community, I think we, we started to do that, so today is to look at sort of where. As decision makers, we think you have a lot of leverage, and we're really curious about. How you feel about that and the things that you think might, uh, progress the future of Old Town, cause that's really what we're focused on here, is that. Health and growth of the businesses and this destination that this is really the heart of the community. Um, so it's not news to any of you, just the preciousness of Old Town and. Coming in as a part of this effort, you know, the task for us is really how do we preserve and strengthen this heart, and so we've learned a lot about its DNA. We've learned a lot about the businesses that are here, the types of uses that, that exist today, the types of uses people are interested in. We've looked at where opportunities for potential redevelopment might be, we've kind of explored what makes you unique and special, and so we're trying to put all that together. And do a strategic plan to provide some direction down the road, and we start with this sort of what we'll call big ideas. And some of that is really extending the DNA of what you've done extremely well in the downtown. Being able to walk around this community is, is one of your precious assets, we heard it time and again, whether it's going up and down Pine or Washington or the side streets. That's part of what is attracting people to downtown, Pine Street has been a really important piece of that defining moment of downtown, so the. Kerbal Street element is really important, that extends from the Art Center, um, up to about First Street. And I think this idea of extending that up to Third is really an idea to capture the beginning, middle and end of Pine is a really important street. Downtown, so we're, we're gonna talk a bit about the value of Pine Street as an infrastructure project. And how it might stimulate development on the sites, cause there's a number of vacant sites on either side of Pine Street, some of which you own as a city. Some of which is private development. The other piece is thinking about Columbia Avenue as an extension in the future to create a new front door into Old Town. One of the things that we learned was this idea of a sense of arrival. Being so far from Highway ninety-nine, it's a bit of a journey coming into town, and even with Oregon Street as a primary access and Sherwood Boulevard, those are great connections. You're well connected to neighborhoods on Main and Washington. But being able to open the door off Oregon Street through property that you own with the Public Works and extending that street that you're about halfway there, at least in terms of getting to. The Oregon Street intersection, we think that is, that's a project worth analyzing and studying and see if there is merit to make that happen. There are some obstacles, the rail line, the Twelve Valley Fire Department, so it's not a clear path, but, um. I think it's something that could stimulate further growth and investment and really create a new front door into town, which is, which is kind of exciting. The other is thinking about all of the properties that you own. And their orientation to both Pine and Columbia, so there's substantial amount of area that you all have control of, and so we've explored. What future development might look and feel like on those sites, one of the things we learned from the developers. That we talked to, a lot of people are really excited about Sherwood, would love to do, do projects here, and some of it is. How does Sherwood tell their story of the types of development you want on these sites, like what is valuable to you, what is valuable to you? You're not always gonna be fully internalized with developers, but telling that story first. Is really a great way to start the conversation, and as you get developers who continue to wanna be here and can align with your values. The strategic plan was meant to kind of be a tool to help open the door to that discussion. And give you some sort of ground to stand on, and I think it, it helps with those conversations down the road, so we're, we're hoping that the strategic plan offers some of. Of that information about what you value in these sites, there's also some private development opportunities, especially about First, you're already seeing. Some movement, uh, next to the old gas station across from Symposium, so there's, developer's been interested in that. PGE has identified a little bit of a bump in the road for development in that they have a power line that's gonna require buildings to be set. Further back from the sidewalk, these are already really narrow lots, so it becomes a challenge then to develop on sites where the poles are. If you're able to go underground, streetscape on Pine, that may open some doors certainly for, for development and to extend that streetscape. From First to Third also sort of creates that.
That would require for new development to build underground. Should be, you know.
It would be, and, and, and in this case, it would be. It would be very expensive to do and, and may not allow the project to move forward, and so it's, it's difficult to get these small lots to pencil. When they're carrying the cost of the undergrounding, um, and if I can jump in and say, we're, um, please jump in with the questions, comments, anytime. Jump in anytime, happy to pause, um, yeah, go ahead.
Sure.
It's almost like we need to kind of sort of. Set a project where we do that, for the whole strip along with the curbless, not all one shot and then charter back to.
Yep, and, and that will be one of the proposed actions, yep, exactly, yep.
Um, the other is the Washington Street Crossing, so a lot of great work to get. Some additional crossings back in the day, you spent a ton of money to rebuild rails and your portion of Old Town is a part of that effort. But gosh darn it, Washington Street is a connection now, and you've got this reserve of parking on one side, you've got all these businesses on Rainbow Avenue and you're. Walking around sites, and it seems kind of silly that you can't just move through there, so it's a difficult conversation with ODOT Rail and. And the leases that use the rail, but we got some indication a little bit from ODOT Rail that, you know. It's always good just have another conversation, write a letter and see how much we've worked this in there, so.
Or the tenth time.
Or the, or hundredth time, yes, and is, is that something you're excited to pursue, probably not. But the community was really excited about this.
Pursue it, it's just a bummer to keep getting the door slammed, you know, like I'll write a letter every day, but yeah.
Portland and Western has actually been receptive, it's specific, which actually owns the rail, the PW leases there from, it's been a problem.
Um, but it's, so, yes, it's, we're continuing to bring.
Only about pedestrian or have they been about a whole crossing?
Both, yeah.
Yeah, I wonder if it may be just pedestrian, it'd be more receptive.
Maybe more receptive.
We've had, we've had those conversations, we can't even get, uh, some city even to talk to us.
I mean, TriMac gets it done with light rail stations, they cross them all the time, so there's, there is a path, I know there is a path. But how hard we wanna, yeah, how many door slams can you stand, I guess is the, the big question.
And I'm not implying we don't try, it's just, it's more than we have in front of us.
Well, I mean, I shouldn't get any props for basically handing you guys a bunch of stuff to try and figure out. Totally like, I, I have empathy for you as decision makers who have to make decisions about these things. Another, uh, a piece of infrastructure that, um, I'm kind of interested in, there's been some discussion about improving alleyways, and those always seem like. Yeah, great when you can get to it, but there's a lot of other things maybe to invest in, but I do feel like your Oregon Street, the promenade you've, you've created today and it goes. Between City Hall and then stops at Pine Street, extending that to the Veterans Park would, I think would be. Would be just a great complement to that sort of completing that promenade, some of these things are just like, you have these great assets and they're just. Two more blocks or, you know, three more blocks to complete those, so it's on the list, it felt like something really, a good connection. I always get excited when we're on Railroad Avenue, we'll see families usually in the evening time coming down Main Street and crossing the tracks, and so, I mean, I know. People are walking and hanging out downtown.
Let's go back, pause.
Oh, sorry.
To extend this, are you, I don't know, envisioning additional crosswalks at all these junctions or consider a cross at the corners where they are now and then. Go back to.
Yeah, I think looking at the potential for mid-block crossings would be, would be something to consider, pretty low traffic volume on the streets. But that is something that you would want to, if you're encouraging that walkway, you would want to, to explore what those crossings would be. Um, and so, yeah, I think, yes, that should be a part of it, it would, it would just be.
Yeah, I will say.
It was like there's so many, this talking last two weeks ago about having so many crosswalks on a street to, this is an even shorter distance to have. National stops for cars, potentially.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you taking questions from the public?
Typically, we don't, but, but we'll, we'll allow, go ahead.
On the item that is to pursue new front door access.
Uh huh.
Was there a new entry, a entry road?
Yeah. You see those dash lines up on the right?
Right.
Upper right of the screen, I'll go back to it and we'll just boom. So imagine Flumby Street extending all the way to Oregon Street. And this side of the rail crossing and making that big connection, so Langer could come in and connect to this extended Columbia as well as Oregon. And so now you have a new front door lease.
And how do you get them off Ninety-Nine?
Oh, well, that's really hard, that's wayfinding and signage and letting folks know that, hey, there's this great Old Town, so there's a little bit of that.
It's like having a second entrance to Old Town, coming from Sherwood Boulevard would be one and coming this way would be another, so. Since we are so far away from Ninety-Nine, there's two ways to get to our Old Town.
Otherwise, you just put more traffic on the street.
Yeah.
Uh, let's go to the end of the pause, so these are the, the sort of, the big ideas, there's gonna be associated actions to implement these ideas, but general feedback on these. Um, uh, if, if everyone's in support, we can just keep on going.
Oh, have we found a roundabout straddling a railroad in America?
Yeah.
Three of them are in full Indiana, why Indiana's into that, but the other one is a video from Texas, Los Angeles.
And it's similar sized roads?
Or it's actually Georgia, yes.
And HHPR did a study on that, right, one, one of the options is.
I don't remember, I, I know they were, yes, I mean, HHPR did the geometrics of these, just to see if, would it physically fit? Like we have run models for.
Yeah, we have a traffic.
Not just around. At work, but, but the fire station, you know, that's clearly in the cap, and that's a conversation.
We've got, we've got a solution to that.
Would it be, would it be possible to get a rendering that shows a relocated fire, fire station? I think that'd be helpful in having conversations with them, and it took part of their concern is, is our timeframe doesn't fit their timeframe, but there's intermediate solutions of. Moving them on our timeframe and they still have access, you know, to set us up for the future.
Yeah, but where, where would they go to, you mean a, a different.
H two.
Another site.
H one or H two? H one or H two?
Oh, okay.
Or stay in the.
Or the, you could, Craig and I talked about this a little bit, you could relocate part of the yard somewhere else and where the community garden is and the yard is. There's, there's a lot of options, uh, in there, but it would be great to have a visual to show the.
Sure.
Part of what that could look like.
Okay.
Yeah. Can we find another place for the community garden for anyone else?
Yeah, I mean, we're putting a road right there by Sever, I mean, there could be some remnants.
These are one of the cheaper things to move.
Right, yes.
Yeah, if we can find other homes, that would be great, maybe the church would be in the city.
May harvest for, for the year.
Yeah, this question.
For the pedestrian rail trail.
Yes.
Do we need right of way from the railroad for that, or is that far enough?
Um, most agreements, they don't want you to be in the rail, in the rail right of way, so, yes, that would need to look for, but. I have worked on instances where the trail is actually, you convince them that that is access to do rail maintenance. So it's really, they have access to it, they can drive in and they can, you know, update stuff and it gives them.
So they get something out of it.
They get something out of it, yeah.
Sold on the rail trail, yeah.
Does it, does it make a difference if it's a permanent trail versus like a boardwalk or someone else?
I mean, for just maintenance, be able to get in there, you only want it to be paved, but it could be, yeah, it could be any number.
I just, I, I didn't know if it was like, well, they, if it's permanent, then they'd have to give permission, but if it's a boardwalk or something.
Right, I see what you're saying, yeah, or if it was more like brush gravel based, something more like a trail, less.
Yeah.
Yeah, there may be some flexibility.
There's a rail and trail project in the west part of Washington County that was going on right now, but it was years. I wanted to get them to give up that right away for it.
Right, and they took the rail out.
Yeah, all right, that's what I'm saying, is there something that's less than that?
And I'm not, I'm, the, 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 the space for that trail you need for redevelopment, parking and other stuff.
What side of the, of the railway vision have you on?
On the Art Center side.
Better have a nice.
That would.
Side law.
Have a kind of a multi-use trail that's on Oregon Street today, you know, it stops at that sort of barricade, maybe half mile from the train crossing. So imagine that trail continued. Which basically runs along the rail today, just bring them to, to town, to town, and then you could connect to the trails.
Thing is, that one.
I'm gonna leave it on the list, but it's a matter of when it gets prioritized or funded, right?
Yeah.
Could that be shifted to Columbia Avenue and that be.
Essentially, I don't even like.
Absolutely, there's other ways to make that, I really wanted to think about how that multi-use trail on.
Very long perspective.
You wanna link to this?
Let's go show this one here, that, that's probably a good visual.
Um, can I do this one, or you, oh yeah, just for, for view, yeah.
That's a rendering of what it could look like. So it's, we're just giving up right away, it's not really a rail to rail, it's.
I put this in the railman, but, um, in your negotiation. I put this in the rail man, but um, in your negotiations, yes, it would probably be eating into those parking. Parking along the rail. So I think that is. Obviously Keith's, you know, tracking key there. That's a consideration.
Which a lot of people would park about there.
Yeah. I think you want to lose that parking for.
That might be the lead, the bottom of the list. Seems like strike it off the list.
But or strike it off the list. I mean, the crossing of Washington, I think is a really a great opportunity.
Crossing, yes. I mean, if, if you're using the. If you're putting a trail in a space where we can't build anything. Otherwise, then I don't care. But if it's taking up space where we're gonna, where we could build. A structure or parking. Then, then it's a.
In this case, it also runs parallel to a sidewalk that's twenty feet away, which seems a little redundant.
This can, like you were saying, from Oregon Street all the way down to.
To the Cree.
To the Cree's. So connects that trail where this sidewalk doesn't do that.
Yeah, yeah, I'm well, you can just cross at the, yeah, you know, where, where the sidewalk ends you. The trail starts or something like, you wouldn't have to go through this part of town with the trail, but you could have it on the other section or whatever. But these are all.
Wouldn't have to switch on street and back to trail. But um. Um, let me come back to the other piece of pine and Columbia is where they're looking at um, where the redevelopment opportunity. And what's exciting about Pine Street is there's a number of sites to really sort of help fill in those nooks and crannies to create that continuous edge to edge. Storefront experience. That's what you have on Washington, there's only side streets. And so this is a great opportunity, both in sites that you all own, site A at the end of Third. And Pine, and then you see B and C, those are privately owned and across from C. And then down at D, of course, site D here at the Art Center um, site and then. Much of the property you have along Columbia Avenue is under city ownership, except for that letter F. Which currently you all, I think there's a project. A redevelopment review for that site.
The challenge with A, B and C. As you put on there. Zero parking, hundred percent pedestrian.
And I think, I was just gonna mention that. Did, did you put any thinking into, you know, as Sherwood grows, you know, twenty years from now. We could have thirty five hundred, four thousand or housing units in trigger loss. Um, the need for parking downtown is needing to continue to expand and there's. State rules, we can't require parking.
Right.
And new structures. So for some of the city owned lots, we may be. We need to be thinking about, do we have to put in parking structures?
I think there is a problem.
The, so.
Well, let me, I just like here is.
Sure. I mean, creating a parking reserve is important. I don't think you have a parking problem right now, given the square footage that you have and. But during events, yes. Um, and then you need to, you need to. Way where the location of those that parking goes. So for instance, you could start parking on, on A. You could. Gravel that out and have some sort of excess parking for the street. I think that would be fine if you're reserving that site for future development. But this idea of Pine Street. Being built out with edge to edge buildings, I think that's where your success is in the future. So if we were to do parking, which we can temper them, I think we want to find some sites that are. Behind or integral that you could. You could. Create a parking reserve. One location I think is interesting is, and we don't own this, but the land by the church. It's sort of open now. There's a sign for Christmas coming up and on their lot. And boy, that could create quite a bit of excess parking. It's so close to that Oregon Street promenade connection. So it'd be easy to walk into town. From, from that location. You do a pretty good job. When we come in town, you've got a, you've got a city lot right there. And then you take a lap and you come back to this location. So I think you. You strategically put some great public parking as well as the art center. Um, but to your point, other sites. Or maybe a garage would have to go in.
Yeah, I just wanted to call out that on those, those three, hundred percent. And the parking that you have is.
Yeah, uh, but I also, so my feeling on that is that if we design it right, part of the charm of Old Town. Is that you park somewhere and you walk, right? You're, we're not, this is not the kind of a. Experience that is, I'm going to drive from store to store.
A lot.
Right? We, we want it to be an experience where it's like, I want to discover what's in Old Town today. Um, you know, and so I'm hitting the farmer's market and then I'm walking up to a bakery and I'm going to, you know, vegetable, but. Whatever it is, you know, I'm, I'm seeing the new stuff. And I'm discovering it and it is a. It is meant to be a leisurely walk activity versus. I'm driving to Washington Square Mall where I'm going to a.
I don't live on that side of Sunset, so you know.
Hundred percent, but I don't want it, you know, using, and again, I'm fine with graveling over something if. To reserve it, but I, but the parking needs, like you don't want to, that's not what. Yeah, it doesn't need to be in the heart or it doesn't need to be. No, I know, I know, I know. I'm just saying that if we design it right, it's meant to be. A walkable, designable, you know, discoverable area.
Just suggesting that even for what you're talking about. There is a walk from the car to those shops.
Yeah.
And we have to have a place for them to park. We don't have.
I would be strategic about parking down the road, going just having the land area that's not. In the heart here, it's on the edge. You've got a great lot here. This could, you could add capacity to this by adding levels for it's sake. But if you were to acquire some of these parcels moving toward Oregon Street, I think that. That would be a strategic purchase. I think negotiating with.
Was.
Down the staff's radar.
With this group is, is another option. So I think. It may be here, these, these sites, I think, become good potential reserved sites down the road if you.
Yeah, to give options.
Yeah, and just to, uh, we're gonna get to it, but one of the actions is to develop a parking strategy. Long-term parking strategy. So I think it's, it's in the action plan. Um, and it's something that, that we'll look at. And I think with the feedback we're getting, we'll look. Long-term at basically at full buildout densities, you know, what, what is needed and, and where, where should we acquire if we need to or what agreements do we need to strike?
Especially, you know, our goal is tourism too, you know, so for people coming into town. We have to have a place for them to park down.
Yeah.
You know, I'm, I've always said, uh. For the charm of Old Town, like we're having is, it's busy, it's crowded, it's challenging. If you really want to do it, you have to kind of figure it out. So I'm, I'm okay with all that. It's. It's tailored cut more or less hence that. Um, so, and there's not a parking problem today.
So we talked about fine, I think Columbia is, is clearly another opportunity. So we've explored development, what. Future development might be on these sites. And I think the important thing is. Is Canary Square is such a great asset here and, you know, activating that with, you know, ground for. Retail and active uses is just to me an, an absolute no brainer. I mean, you've got this tremendous amenity there. You've already activated this corner. We may get a little activation here with residence living, which is another great piece. Having people living in Old Town is really most creates that. Eighteen hour environment where there's like people at night, people in the daytime. Um, and so I think that's, that's a good thing, but. Boy, envisioning. All sides of this activated, I think is, is really compelling. And you control site D, which is great. And then this is the Canary PUD site on G. And I know I'm talking to Eric that some of the. Increased height density that was offered here took away some of the housing potential. On G, and I think that's something you might want to revisit, what, what you might allow on G instead of just having it be retail, for instance. What I'm really worried about retail down here and if additional retail is built, because this is all zone retail commercial. Is there's no way to get to it. And frankly, all this excess of retail that is accessible is. You've got to question, is that the right use without?
They must, that should be residential first one. Or at least the good things.
If you, if you don't extend Columbia, yeah, I think housing would be a good, residential would be a good. About change of use.
First floor retail. Financial law or something. I mean, you, you need more people down here. If you're gonna, otherwise these businesses aren't gonna, are gonna be empty.
Yeah, the, creating, creating mass of residents. Um, either short term or long term.
Yeah.
It's important. So hotels or residents.
I know.
It did create the mass of people that need that coffee every day, that need that.
Meeting that I attended that with uh, Cooper Mountains. There was some concern right there at Canary Square in the building next to it, whether that was a hotel and having strangers overlooking. Where people's young children play. That was a lot, that was some concern.
Um, our Leland Consulting Group really liked this as a boutique hotel site. And then we've heard some other comments. But I think a boutique hotel site down here would also work extremely well because it's so down into weather and all the entertainment things that are happening there. And it's got a great kind of crosstown connection if, if we were to be there. So I think that this ability of this would be. Really great for a boutique hotel. Um. I think, I think they both could work, but I feel like you have a little more space down at the other end too.
I also think we're gonna run out of, I mean, because city grows and again, I got my twenty, thirty year lens on here. But as the city grows, can't, we're gonna run out of space in Canary Square.
It's all right.
For, for the events.
Oh yeah, we have to make it larger.
We're gonna, I, I envision some of those, that widening.
It may be getting bigger.
Putting more buildings and crinkers and just.
Slide it, yeah, slide the whole thing down.
Well, I do love that you have Robin Hood Plaza and you have Canary Square. So you could like. When you were to do this, close down Pine and really have sort of like two sort of anchors would be interesting. Um, so. I think we all see the potential value of, of investment, both in some infrastructure and what we develop in the amount of. Of Pine and Columbia. And so. Part of what we, we, we did, and this was. Part scare factor and part like, okay, what, what's the sensibility for everyone is to start exploring what. The intensity of development on the sense, say the capacity of the site to hold mixed use, let's say housing commercial. So we started doing that exercise for each of the sites. And part of this is. If you, if you see a product that you like, that's part of what you can talk to developers about, that we would, you know, our sensibilities and our values leaning. For a certain direction. So all the buildings you've seen here all would, would fit within current code. We have added some parking for that site A on the back side, which today isn't allowed on the ground floor, but. We explored on site B with a potential local developer who wanted to do a bookstore and his family was interested in doing. Couple floors of housing above that they could rent out. So it'd be like a legacy property. Um, but a little bit of parking was. Kind of important for them to get financing. So we were just sort of testing the waters and seeing what products might fit. So. This is a site where site A could be ground floor commercial with housing above, or that could be flex office space above, but multi-story at that location. We haven't built all of it out. We know there was some interest in a car pod and activating that corner. So we've. I think in an interim phase, you could build a portion of the site and then you might add additional building over time. But this really creates that beginning and middle of an end of Pine Street. Like this is kind of a front door piece. We would suggest that in any development agreement for parcel A, that you carve out some, some space for. Public plaza, because in my mind, that's the DNA of Pine Street. You've got this, you've got Robin Hood Plaza and you've got Canary Square. And I think the complement of those three. Would, it, it's a great amenity you have. It's great for development. Their, their values go up when you have amenities like this. And I think it contribute to. Kind of the experience of being downtown. So that could be something that you put in a development agreement, like we want mixed use. Multiple story, but we, we'd like to see a plaza space here and a good crossing on all four sides of the street.
I just pause here. The, we got some feedback from you at the last work session on which sites to move on first. So site D was one of them. That's why we're, or site A was one of them. That's why we're highlighting it today. So tonight, we're gonna talk about site D, which we'll show next. Um, but site A is also on our radar as, as. Figuring out how to allow that to develop under the city's goals.
We're also showing the, just the portion that, that you all own where the school used to be, but I believe there was some discussions with property. Just adjacent where they were considering.
Yeah.
Larger redevelopment. So who knows? It could be that that, that footprint got larger, for instance.
Might be something to trade with them.
Well, I mean, he sold it. We haven't talked to the new guy, right?
Oh, did he sell?
Yeah, he sold it.
Or they spit the lawyer in the new place. That's gone.
But, well.
I think if it was designed in such a way that if somebody wanted to redevelop it in the future, in a way that it could seamlessly. Private redevelopment can seamlessly kind of. Fit into whatever happens inside A, we'd be great. But if it doesn't work, then it doesn't, it's not required as part of whatever we do on site.
I mean, if it came that that person was motivated to develop and, and A could. They create a bigger footprint and you all could agree in. The development agreement, then maybe like, yeah, okay.
I think long-term, there's no short-term play.
So we, we've shifted down. We hit a couple of sites. We looked at some museum in, in one of you, but now we're gonna go straight to D.
All right, this is.
Real quick, we're gonna have a larger conversation about site A down the road.
Absolutely.
I'll save my.
Yep.
Okay, great. And this is a great site, obviously. Location, the proximity of the art center. We explored. A, a, a single story building here. I think the idea being this could be kind of a flex space. As a complement to the art center, imagining sort of being able to expand the art center program where you've got the auditorium, but then you can break out. Into space in this, in this um, single story building, or it'd be a great, obviously, retail site, grab and go deli. Um, bakery, all kinds of stuff directly across from Canary Square. But you can see it really starts to create that great edge along Pine Street.
Single story is a must. You can't.
I don't see any reason going, can't go higher.
So hide our art center.
It's gonna hide it anyway. Even a single story will walk the art center.
So I would, I have, if we want to expand the art center, then we should get rid of the street behind it, but program space in behind it, connect it to the building. And think differently about that whole area in terms of the square, creating more covered event space.
Yeah.
Uh, for, um, it'd be great to have a Saturday market that could happen in the rain because we have an outdoor covered area, right? I, I, I think there's other ways to expand the art center. They seamlessly put it into the building. Uh, without necessarily giving up that lot. For another building and not to mention parking and.
We're gonna have a conversation about that site, so.
Yeah.
We are.
I, I want to explore this Canary Square a little bit, this maybe grows this way. But what if it grew that way? And you own this, this site over here and I'm, I'm just sort of thinking out loud that if the, if the park grew on both sides of Columbia, that may be another. Another thing to look at. And is hard to expand.
Like the, the perfect world for me is an expanded art center into the back. So you have more program space. A boutique hotel with some programming space, because then you could start to get small conferences.
Yeah. Synergy others there downtown.
Yeah. I, I, I mostly agree with that. I actually like there being commercial on site D a little bit because when I drive by it. During the day, the thing that's empty is the parking lot for the art center, right? I mean, it's, it's used at performances at night, but. It's not, and so that's, we get two for one there on the parking. Uh, we get to have it used.
And that crossing of Washington Street, that would change.
Yeah, that's true. You know, and I, so I, I, I would see it as, you know, hey, we're targeting the people who are coming to the library and Canary Square in the summer. And, you know, maybe, you know, the older sibling is at a park area thing at the art center. But they're the target audience for that kind of stuff uh, during the day.
Thank you. Yeah, I want to keep us moving because we're gonna, we're gonna get to a very, a specific conversation on, on D. Yep.
So this is to site H, we're sort of looking north. Northwest, uh, the. The crossing at Oregon Street is just off the screen there and, and we can't see obviously the fire station because that's down below. Um, but this is. Then a scenario looking at mixed use, so multi-story housing above. Um, some ground floor commercial, the buildings on the left there is taking the old fieldhouse and that could be. Could be a larger floor plate retail like that community very, uh, sort of, that'd be pretty easy.
Or it could be kept.
Yeah, yeah, or be kept, exactly. Um, but it could create sort of a note. Point is whether it's keeping the fieldhouse or whether it incorporated some additional retail. Of course, we've shown the roundabout on the track there. Um, so you'll see that the roadway line is going to cross both sides and bringing that front door.
Well, the, yeah, for each one. Until, yeah, I get, my perspective get persuaded differently is. Fieldhouse gets converted into bigger kind of fieldhouse. There's space. I mean, for those that love pickleball.
Yeah.
They put a lot of pickleball. I can be inside, control the noise.
I need pickleball outside of Sherwood. We're good.
Well, whatever you put in there. My point is the paid for building.
Yeah, and frankly, if it is. Yeah, but I would have to look at the numbers to see if it's being rented during the day or not, right? I mean.
Well, we can't rent it during the day. Right now.
Cause there's no parking, that's public parks.
No, I know, but okay, alright.
And I mean, there are some great models of these, becoming multi-purpose rec center and they have a brewery and I'm like a Rose City, that's all really big. Tigered and Portland and like. And I mean, there are some great models of these becoming multipurpose rec center and they have a brewery in them, like a Rose City Futsal is really big and Tigered in Portland and they got a great.
We need indoor sports rec space.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
You gotta plug your downtown. And we have a bought paid for building.
Yeah. Well, I'm also curious, could, you know, um. Hitty corner from the fire station, there's that sort of industrial building right at Langer and Reva, right?
Yeah.
That that seems like an interesting.
Still pallet site?
Yeah.
Oh, that's great, it's on the.
Huge for.
So we need that to residential. I have the residence there for info.
That was a something we talked about, I mean, it's not.
Right, no.
An idea, yeah.
Yeah.
You talking the the old pallet, yeah, yeah.
Be great. Well, thank.
Another one? It was. So few sheets of ice down region.
It'd be funny to have, see what the same town, yeah, you can really have some big tournaments and she used to get to lose places draw. If only we had a hotel.
So the first part of this was talk about big ideas and really get thinking about what the future would be, because I think if that's in your mind. As we look at these three buckets of things that that we think are gonna contribute to your strength. Having that in the back of your mind, it's a good thing, and maybe you you see, oh yeah, there's pieces of these action plans that we've been supporting, so we've broken them into what we call three buckets since our arrival. That got into, you know, how do you, how do you make old? The historical old town more overt and accessible to the general public, the passerby down ninety nine needs better cues about. Old town.
And to Alden Sherwood.
Into Alden Sherwood and and others, and maybe off Sunset when Southwest is built up and you want those people. Coming into Old Town down Sunset and then Main or Washington, however, they're gonna get back in town. But the idea, the 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 thing is, wayfinding is gonna be important, and that can be improved along Highway ninety nine and along Sherwood. Um. To Alden Road, so that that's one piece.
Signs you come in south to Sherwood. It says wine country tour turn right.
Go the other way.
The opposite version.
I think there's a sign for an antique store that's no longer open on Highway ninety nine, so there's, you know, some dated information out there. That there's some strategic locations, so you wanna capture people at ninety nine, these busy roads, but you kind of need parents to get them into Old Town, so there's a, there's information about. You know, how to set up this wayfinding and signage plan, and likely that doesn't have to be something that's just done by the city, I think that. The Sherwood Main Street Organization, the Chamber, you've got partners, uh you know, your Twalton Tourism Group. Who who I think you could pool together and really develop funds, because you want those brains. For tho- those different groups who are also really tied into both tourism and successful businesses to be a part of. Your wayfinding signage plan, so I think that's definitely kind of a group project, um. Improving access of the of the streetscapes, we've talked about Columbia, just, you know, and and Pine Street is continuing that, I think is a good. Creating that anchor and sense of a front door. Linking to your close in neighborhoods is really awesome, I've talked a lot about a five minute walk, five minute bike ride into downtown Sherwood, you've got. Drive by traffic is one way to get customers, but there's so many people living close by that when they have the options. To walk and bike, so there's a few sort of key corridors. Improving trail connections that aren't quite done, filling gaps, those are opportunities to make it that much easier for folks to take that easy walk by ride into downtown, so we've. Listed where all your projects are and reprioritization. Where opportunities exist to sort of focus on some of those connections, another thing is to think about programming more like. Walk and bike events where it's like a neighborhood bike ride or downtown bike ride, and just once your facilities start getting built to sort of normalize it and make it these sort of fun. Types of activities that you can do throughout the year, so. You know, tons of cities do this uh all the time, and I think that's just a great opportunity to reinforce the great trails and bike networks.
Pause it for a second, so I'm just doing a a time check, we got roughly fifteen minutes left, um we can keep going into actions and get into a little bit more detail. If you'd like that, we could switch over to site D and get that, if we continue on the actions, we're probably gonna have to come back after the regular meeting to do site D, so.
You didn't switch to whatever B.
We do.
We're gonna have to anyways, there's no way we're gonna get site D done in fifteen minutes.
Keep going on actions, thank you.
So keep going, okay. Um the next is business health and growth, and so I think branding is another opportunity and and lar- largely that would. Be initiated by businesses and support. With the city, because you all do sponsor some of the key events that happen downtown, so you're already. You're already doing some of that work, but I think for the old town businesses collectively to sort of build their brand is is an important thing, and I think you all can help reinforce that. So again, that's sort of a partnership role in expanding events and programming as much as you can continue to do that, that's great, you've already got some well established. Programs and.
The other, is that what the downtown businesses are saying? I mean, just because we we get, I've heard. Very split opinions.
Uh huh.
Some that say they hate the events. And then others that that love the events, and if we have more events, do we need the same kind of events that are mass events?
Um, no. Probably don't need more than mass events, and probably those are the ones that maybe get prickly for some who feel like they don't benefit from it. But things like the the Main Street Group, they they did a wine walk and things where the businesses have like a promotional thing where it's, you know, less street closure and more like. How do we get more?
She walked into businesses on that that I'd never been in before.
How about one where everyone? A few businesses decide to be open on Sunday or things like that where you can get a little more activity in downtown, that's kind of what we're thinking about.
Yeah, I saw literally a business, uh a town that did a head costume parade essentially where everybody is. And it was all, and everybody just had dog treats or.
But I think their old tenants do that on home, you know, do that like a candy.
Well, no, the the kids, yeah, but I'm just saying again. You're hitting another target of people, demographic of people, and you're just giving away biscuits, right? You know, and. On the big events, the complaint that came up around that some of the businesses felt like. They were kind of being hidden and shoved and blocked in a lot of, and I think there's some truth to that, as I thought about it, and I thought. We could work with the big event vendors.
Actually did this year.
And I know. Well, I think there's more that can, yeah, where the the old town business can. Can be incorporated maybe better into the events or, you know, partners or maybe the nation status, yeah, or get, you know, something where it's more, it's less combative and more they're working together or all the, you know.
Yeah.
Or and some of that's on the businesses themselves, saying like, okay. Set up a table. Out on the street and hand out flyers and coupons and tell them where we'll walk away so they can come back later, right? Some of it's on the businesses too, but I think there's more that the events.
Yeah, is there? Right, we have, we have old town businesses. That embrace events and they thrive during them, and we have others that like forget they exist and then complain when they arrive.
Okay, so another one is is attracting targeted businesses and in, you know, bringing the businesses that you wanna see in. In the downtown, again, that that largely comes out of the the business, an organized business group. Like the Sherwood Main Street, which isn't quite there yet, but they're they're working on it, they've talked a lot of it about events. They wanna do in amongst the business self, so they're kind of working on something, but again, it says you all. The city and businesses talking, you've got your big events, they've got other things, make sure everyone's talking and those things are communicating, working together, so. There's always.
We don't do anything. We don't, we're organizing events.
Any of those events.
We support others that are doing their big event.
Um, the next is incentivizing and investment in business growth, some of that is, you know. Info and redevelopment of city properties, some of that is looking at different programs, like you you. With the U R A, you had a facade grant program and that gave seed money for a business who's gonna paint or repair a storefront. Um I think those funds aren't available now, but those are just great. Tools to have and they help keep businesses that are here that you wanna keep and to recruit.
You're the size of our U R A, what is it, eighty three million over the next three years, hang on, a hundred K a year for. Grants to encourage the kind of development we want, this.
It's stuff to make sure they're targeted correctly.
That's why, that's why I said what we want, yeah, is is a no brainer in my mind.
And if that means that we're saying, hey, we want a business that is X, Y, and Z. A business like that will get a fifty thousand dollar grant to offset S T Cs or whatever we say.
Whatever, however we set the program.
Okay, that's what I'm interested in as well, I was.
Want a market.
Tiger does that currently, they have this for food and beverage.
Right, Tiger's, Beaverton's Restaurant District does it and they, it's phenomenal to go there and be like, oh.
If we had that in place.
Twenty thousand if you like.
Crazy sushi, yeah.
Um there's other things like non-financial things, looking at your development review process, i- is there a way to, you know. Not fast track that, but make that more.
Speaking of, we're rolling out the red carpet.
That that's our, we've proved a ton on.
Yeah.
We actually call it that.
We call, actually call it red carpet, I think.
Carpet treatment.
But there's just, we have uh. Um unimaginative landlords. Um and I think some of that, well, we just talked about it in the last meeting, some of the costs. To bring the uh um. The use up to the level that these developers need or the small business that wants to come in is just prohibitive.
Yeah. Uh. Yeah. So there's also some initiate some regulatory modifications, we talked a little bit about the P U D on Canary, I mentioned a little bit about. Um. Parking not being allowed in the retail commercial zone and maybe. Some parking could be allowed as long as it's not. On the street and it's behind, um but again, these are, these are all things just to explore, because parking will continue to be an issue as more things get built and people aren't. Building parking for those projects and it's not like the people are gonna build underground.
Is the state that's restricting our ability to require parking? Well, I don't think hotel developers nod to the parking.
Well, right now, your code says you cannot put parking on the ground floor. In the old town portion, so between the rail line and Third Street, you, if you have a. You have to have a commercial use on the ground floor and there can be no parking, that means it has to go under.
I remember when we adopted that.
Yeah, so that. I- is that causing an issue? I don't, I don't really know, it's one of those things where when you're looking at financing, sometimes they.
I think we did, what we, what we were trying to avoid was the first floor being a, just a parking garage and then residential above and there's no. Commercial use, right, no, yeah.
We could likely do a quick code update to address that just for Old Town while maintaining it in the larger commercial centers, which I think was really.
But I think even in Old Town. I mean, we have to have that conversation, it's not what we want, but we want.
Yeah, it's just another conversation.
Yeah, it could be conditioned where you have to get it approval, show us how you're making it work and. Then it's okay, you don't have to.
State laws are fun. Cause it's.
There's also some laws. Some some code language, we've talked to Eric about adjusting, you know, the what we call the oil can Henry's building next to Symposium, some things that. That we can look at in the code to adjust. Material, for instance, to help to grow some of those concerns, I think window depth is another one, so we've provided some language and some. Crossouts in the code of things that. That staff can look at for those changes, because I know that was an issue kind of early on in this process and. That building was an example of that, and as you see all these sites for redevelopment.
So they did plan.
I know, it's, everyone loves to.
Yeah. The original original was good.
The original original was good.
And they ditched it, built that thing.
Um the other piece then, developing a parking strategy, we talked a bit about that, you know, management of the parking you have now, creating turnover through. You know, hourly parking and those types of things can all contribute, um but thinking about future reserves now, if you think you can acquire some property and. And try to negotiate that into your longer term plans could be a good thing. The last one then is infrastructure and development, and so that really gets into. Um sort of where your sensibilities are in terms of. Doing some of these infrastructure improvements to maybe stimulate investment and development and or. Get properties out in front of developers, whether it's a developer offering or site D, I know you're talking about building your own project there.
Undergrounding, so undergrounding that.
Underground utility, it was on pine, that's another one, extending Columbia Street, it could initially be just doing the study for extending Columbia and. Determining the feasibility and then having conversations and coordinating public works and having an option to block the fire and all these. Different groups that are gonna be impacted by that, but that's an, I I think that's a really important project to explore now and to determine the feasibility for. For money, the next thing is, where the hell is the money gonna come from? So there's no urban renewal area and we think now is a really good time to look at a local improvement district. Given you've got sort of two key streets for green infrastructure for finding Columbia, you have sites for that could be redeveloped and. Columbia is gonna have a benefit to every business in Old Town, and the way the L I Ds work is you, you spread the cost out. Throughout the potential, potentially the the Old Town District. Typically, the properties that are immediate to where the improvement are, they they have to put more skin in the game and then you you sort of. They have lesser contributions as you move geographically away from those, that's kind of how L I Ds work.
Well, there was just, there was one L I D that that actually failed, like that before, pre, pre uh all of us. Um but the rest out off or off of Oregon and Murdoch. There was L I D out there. I've been told, like, it was, it failed before we were around.
So.
Before you got hurt.
I think that's, that's it, so any, any.
L I D, potential reimbursement district.
Um.
Those two ideas for doing stuff Old Town.
Is there any legality in saying, hey, your business has to be open for so many hours a month? Or is that, or are we not able to do that? Cause we've got a bunch of places like the old funeral place that are just storage centers. Um, can we say? Hey, we wanna have your business open?
I never, I don't know, ask me to flip.
Yeah, look into it, cause I, seriously, I feel like there's these, a couple of places that are dead zones for, that are like, wow, it would be really nice if.
Spaces right now.
Unused, yeah.
Do any of the actions um not not speak to you? Um anything that concerns you or doesn't, or does not speak to you?
He didn't like the rail thing.
Only if it impacted development.
Right.
If it's part, if it's, if it's, if you can put it along there and it's an access base, the benefit of the railroad too, that doesn't impact the parking or the building uh. Below.
Yep.
I'm gonna campaign for it.
Cool, any, any other feedback, anything really speak to you that you wanna prioritize, or yeah, go ahead, counselor, stand key, yeah.
The previous uh planning commission meeting was the L U twenty five zero seven, was that approved across Canary Square?
Yes.
Does that impact or change site F? Now.
Go to site F for a quick.
Site E, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, so site E?
It's site E, cause it's site F is the.
It it would not change site E, so that that uh the site F, the site F there is a is a privately owned lot, so we are gonna see.
Build out, does it, is it going to look anything close to what this looks like?
No.
Okay.
Um.
I don't know what it looks like.
The building, the build on the street is there in a different fashion, the the building behind E site is not there.
Yes, so it's one building, it's gonna be more parking where the second building is behind E, and they are gonna put in a basketball court and um a play area and parking and landscaping. It's thirty one feet, three stories, yes, so what I will say is really, I don't mean to get into it too much, but um this is the first application we've gotten with S B fifteen thirty seven. So they were allowed to do mandatory adjustments, they did request an adjustment to the density, so they got a few more units than they would have gotten under the zone. And the minimum lot size, so that they got, they basically got a few more units than they would have, they did not go after height and they did not go after design standards, so that's kind of, that's how that one landed. Um but I, in talking with developer, I would expect tree removal and brush removal here pretty quickly.
Yeah.
Yes, and the and and the general look of the building?
Um generally, there was support for it, um the planning department did a great job working with developer to get to get a better design, um it was generally supported at permission. Uh brick, brick facade on the ground floor and then uh it's kind of a a nice earth tone color building.
Yeah, does it have good articulation unlike the the oil can Henry's?
It could, it could have been better, um could have been better, um but it does have a take out of flat face, okay, it'll have balconies that recess.
Okay, that's good.
Nice.
Alright.
So any other questions? Eric, do you feel like you got direction we need?
Absolutely, thank you.
If you're in this work, we'll leave it on in five minutes, I'm ready.
That's awesome, thanks.
Good work.
It's very exciting.
Kids, you're landing on the right things.
Oh, good. Yeah, the next one's gonna.